...by the news that his tenure was to be ended. We who write this letter are stakeholders directly involved in the day-to-day function of our city. The perspectives of each executive team member is invaluable in assessing the effectiveness of management leadership. We write and urge the council to reach out to us to gain insight into how the city manager position and Doug Sullivan have influenced and improved our operations since the inception of the role on January 1st. This information will be invaluable not only in the assessment of the newly formed role, but also of Mr. Sullivan and indeed imperative to the success of who now fills his role in the future. Our understanding is that Mr. Sullivan's appointee was intended to be at least nine months, with the consideration of a longer term. When the previous council appointed him, it was with the understanding that he had a wealth of knowledge which he could and would benefit from, and that transitions do not work overnight. The nine-month timeframe was intended to afford him the opportunity to get to know all of us, to value the budget, as well as familiarize himself with the strengths and needs of the city so as to apply his knowledge and skills to the greatest benefit. By ending his tenure after a mere three months, we are achieving him, ourselves, and the community of knowledge, experience, guidance, and long-term planning improvement. His expertise in water, sewer systems, engineering, project development, budgeting, and other areas of government operations and management is evident. As you are all aware, what led to the previous council's dislike of Mr. Sullivan for our city manager are his years of experience in the management of the city with a population of 600,000 residents, 3,048,000, an approximate annual operating budget of $1 billion. Additionally, he has served as Executive Director of the West Side Redevelopment Agency as President of Free City Control Not-for-Profit Land Development Services, as well as having served as City Manager for the City of Augusta for nearly five years. Let us not discard the qualified experience of City Managers who have done land Shenham City through a forward and positive direction for the future. We respectfully request that the council consider extending his tenure to continue to work with us in gaining transition reform in the government we have embarked on. We also respectfully request that future decisions engage a more comprehensive evaluation process that takes into account the input and experience of all the City Officers involved. The feedback is critical in order to make well-informed decisions that will best serve our operations and the residents. As members of this community and members of the city administration, we have benefited from Doug Sullivan's leadership, guidance, and knowledge. Although it was not our decision, we firmly believe that without Doug Sullivan's wealth of knowledge, guidance, and professionalism, the residents and employees will truly suffer, and that retaining such a valuable asset is crucial for continued progress and prosperity in our city. Thank you for considering our perspective on this matter.[206.12][206.12](APPLAUSE)
With three minutes, there were seven people standing up here, so they could have easily fasted along, so that's why I gave them a little extra time if anybody in the audience wanted to know. Next person up is Janet Jones.
You're gonna be a tough act to follow. I'm Janet Jones of East Lawrence Street Ward Floor, and I do concern regarding recent reports of closed-door meetings and decisions made by some of our city council. As a resident and taxpayer of the city, I firmly believe in the principles of transparency and accountability that our current council members campaigned on just last year. As our representatives and city government, you can do better for us. The recent actions and decisions by some of the council are troubling, unacceptable, and possibly illegal. I'm a high school math teacher, not a lawyer. I urge the city council to reconsider its approach and commit to a policy of transparency and openness in all proceedings, allowing public access to discussions during decision-making processes, and making meeting minutes and documents readily available to all residents without the need to foil, which just wastes more of our taxpayer money. I would also like to call upon the council, and specifically my ward four councillor, Rob Winchell, to provide an explanation for the recent closed-door actions and to ensure that such practices are not repeated in the future. I believe if all of you get out and speak to your ward residents, they can share that they are not happy about the recent actions and proposed employment changes. It has been the talk of the town since the last city council meeting. We fell for the old bait and switch. The city, um, sorry, the people of this city deserve to have confidence in their elected officials and to know that our interests are being represented fairly and openly. Thirty-two years ago, I moved to Oneida to start a family in this lovely small town and married Dan Jones, a lifelong Oneida resident, active citizen, and registered Republican. In that time, we've witnessed the decline of our city. Oneida has a very good cycle of the wrong people from both political parties elected to office and then good people stepping up to make positive change. We want and deserve a safe city that is run on smart fiscal business decisions and common sense with the best people in all positions regardless of party affiliation. Although Dan and I differed on our position for the city manager referendum, he put a sign in our yard in support and still believes our city needs a city manager. We are all now witnessing that the wrong city council was in place to effectively execute the city manager form of management with consideration and fidelity. I urge the city council to uphold the values you campaigned on and were elected to uphold, transparency and accountability, and to take immediate steps to rectify the lack of openness and intrusive action. Our city depends on it, and the trust of the community hangs as a balance. We support you Mayor Rossi and the council members who stand with you for the greater good. It is not always easy, but doing the right thing is always the right thing to do.
Next up, we have David Shaw.
My name is David Shaw. I live at 230 Cottage Place in Oneida, and I rise to speak on the post changes of the city manager and acting city manager positions. In my opinion, it has become abundantly clear that the citizens of the City of Oneida are not very happy with you, the common council. That is because, in summary, based on public comments from the last common council meeting, my conversations in various social media sites, that most of you may have violated the open meeting law and previously trying to change the qualifications for the city manager position, trying to remove the previously appointed acting city manager, and trying to appoint the lesser qualified director of codes as acting city manager. The reasons for this are unknown, as you have refused to communicate or speak out on the matter when asked to do so. However, after reading tonight's agenda, item 1112, it now appears that you plan on going forward with these changes regardless of what your constituents want, the city needs, and all this without explanation. It appears that you plan on appointing the codes director as acting city manager, firing the city manager, and then by default, the acting city manager will run the city for as long as you want, as there is no provisions as to how long he can fill the position. This is very deceitful. Have you asked the department heads and other city employees their thoughts on this? If you haven't, you should. Could one or all of you please explain your previous actions that prompted this change? Why it will make us a better city? Who brought this change forward? And why you still want to go forward with it? If you cannot do this, I would strongly suggest that this topic be tabled to a later date until you are able to properly respond. Short of that, I would call for your resignations immediately. I believe to be a successful leader and a manager, you must do so with honesty, integrity, and transparency. These are some of the fundamentals that some of you seem to have forgotten from your campaign promises. Are these the attributes that you personally have and want in a qualified city manager or acting city manager? I have previously served on the Oneida City Signing Review Board for over seventeen years until its demise. That said, please reach out to me as I have the willingness to serve my city, your city, again, and be on a committee to help resolve this situation in amicable, professional manner where we, the City of Oneida residents, end up with the most competent and qualified permanent and acting city managers. I want to sincerely thank the employees of the City of Oneida who on a daily basis provide us with a safe, clean, and inviting environment despite all of the problems we have with management here with the city council. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan, for your service. I believe all the one or two city employees appreciated your help and guidance. I'm sorry, my city has failed you. To the common council, maybe all of you should do some soul searching and ask yourself, where's my moral compass? Is this who I am? Is this who I want to be? Is this the legacy that I want to leave to my children and constituents? I sincerely hope that you choose to do the right thing to get through this and accept the help and assistance of others. Show us that you can rebuild the trust we probably had in you in Election Day 2023.
Next up is Mr. Brian Borczy.
I'm Brian Borczy from Leonard Street. Um, I'm gonna be brief, I didn't commit to speaking, but I just wanted to give you my opinion on a lot of different things. First of all, we had a committee to decide about the city manager position. We put in a lot of hours, and now you're gonna change it without talking to the city or talking to the people of the city? You guys have violated your oath of office, and you don't listen to your constituents, and I think with all this that has gone on, I think once it's signed that letter, just resign immediately.
Next up is Patricia Alba.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak, Mr. Mayor and the council. I'm Patricia Alba. I live in the second ward. I've lived in Oneida since 1973. I'm a retired teacher. I taught sixth grade for thirty-four years in Oneida. Every couple of years, a good friend of mine will say, "Pat, why don't you run for mayor? You're good with people." I say, "Well, I'm glad I'm good with people, but I don't know anything about running for, about being a mayor of a city." Over the years, we have had wonderful people serving as mayors, fine citizens who want to do the best they can to serve their community and try to make it a better place. We've had farmers, businessmen, teachers, borrowers, all kinds of professions, be holding the office of mayor. Each has his or her own special skills, but none has had any formal training. They did the best they could, and they gave it their all. For many years, the discussion was present about finally hiring a city manager. It went on and on for many years. Finally, this year, a city manager was on the ballot, qualified person who had studied to know how to run a city, not just try to give it his all, but actually do the job and have the qualifications and know what to do. This is what we voted for in November. This is what we want. Is it gonna, does it cost money? Yes, but we need it. We cannot scrim. We must have this position. We must pay for it. To the council, the people voted for this position, this qualified position. Did I say I resigned in Ward Two? I think I did. I just wanted to make that clear. I applaud anyone who runs for public office. I applaud anyone who runs for city council. But the minute you took your oath of office, you said that you would keep the trust of the people, you would abide by the rules of your office, including the open meeting rule, the open meeting law, and all of its requirements. So please, council, do not even think about changing what the voters voted for in November. You took a big step forward. Do not step back. I plead with you to continue moving forward with honesty, openness, transparency, and always keeping the trust of the people in mind. Thank you very much.[896.75][896.75](APPLAUSE)
Next up, we have Sue Paulring.
So, Pastor Remy, I read a 217, May 4th. First off, I would like to say that I am extremely disappointed by the lack of respect several council members have shown to our mayor. Each of you were elected only by your ward residents. Mayor Rossi was elected by the entire city. The sneaking around behind his back is totally uncalled for. When you disrespect our mayor, you disrespect every person in this city, and that needs to stop. Secondly, I would like to remind the council of a Facebook page that was created before the November election to specifically promote the need for and approval of a city manager. And I actually believe that some members of this council may have been authors on that page. I would like to read some excerpts from that page. Key benefits of having a city manager: Professional expertise. City managers are experienced professionals, and they bring a high level of expertise to efficiently run city operations, make data-driven decisions, and manage budgets effectively. We need a CEO with experience in leading a successful multimillion-dollar enterprise. A business with an inexperienced leader is likely to fail and decline, case in point the way our city is declining and suffering from lack of experienced leadership. A spinning city manager will have the experience and qualifications to lead our city into the future. The qualifications for the position are a four-year degree and five years of public administration experience. We need someone with integrity and strong experience to start running the city like a business. It's time to take the politics out of the day by day. These were all excerpts from that Facebook page. My question is, were all these statements just trickery to get the residents to vote in a positive manner so that the council could then change the qualifications to vet a specific individual? The city voters approved a referendum to hire a city manager based on what we were told, which included the qualifications of a city manager in Local Law Number Three of 2023 for that referendum. What you are trying to do now is deceptive and certainly not in the best interests of the city. Your plan to place any unqualified person into a position where he or she will be the boss of department heads who have master's degrees, bachelor's degrees, engineering degrees, and finance degrees is just totally irresponsible and negligent on your part. This will create a hostile work environment and is certainly not in the best interests of the city and its residents. It is not the way to run a city. Mr. Sullivan was city manager for the City of Las Vegas, population 645,000 people, and the City of Augur, population 27,000 people, both much bigger than Oneida. He was an excellent choice to get our city back on track. Mr. Sullivan made a decision to choose a city comptroller as selection for his acting city manager because she meets the qualifications and has the experience and skill set to tackle the demands of this position. Why does the council hire a skilled professional like Mr. Sullivan and then just ignore his expertise? You are putting politics like that into the equation. I want to thank Councilor Zentchak for his knowledge and understanding that dumbing down the qualifications is just plain wrong on so many levels and will not positively serve the residents of this city. Finally, I want to thank Mayor Rossi for his appeal of 2464 to change the qualifications of city manager, and hope that the members of this council listen to your constituents and do not override that appeal. Remember, you work for us. Listen to all of these people here.
Next up is Mike Peiser.
Sitting back there, just now I'm saying to myself, boy, I hope they don't make me follow suit.[1234.58][1234.58](LAUGHTER) But they did. I'll be started by thanking Councilor Tom Zentchak and Mayor Rossi for showing courage and integrity in standing up to an attempt by an unethical external political faction to subvert the will of the voters on the city manager issue. I have some questions for the common council. You can consider them rhetorical questions. We understand you have the obligation to answer them in this forum, although I'm quite sure you'll have to answer for your actions someday. I noticed in the adjourned at night meeting that items 11 and 12 were submitted by council. No further indication which councillor or councillors are responsible for items 11 and 12. So what's the origin of this scheme? Who contracted this plan? Who benefits from appointing an unqualified individual to be our city manager? Maybe a person, a person who can control and direct an unqualified individual. I'd like to know who. I'd like to urge the council to support Mayor Rossi on agenda item one and reject items 11 and 12. I would also suggest the council meet with the city attorney and discuss some specific legal issues. Our city attorney is very capable and experienced and was a prime municipal government. She can advise you on the open meetings law. She can also advise you on Article Five, Section Six of the New York State Constitution, which provides for appointments and promotions in public employment to be made on the basis of merit and fitness. This constitutional provision is the foundation of New York State's civil service law. To draft qualifications to suit a particular individual is patronage, contrary to the spirit, intent, and letter of civil service law. Our city attorney also advised you on the state law under Article 78, which is a procedure for challenging the actions of public bodies. An Article 78 proceeding can be very costly in this city, and in this case, based on what actions you've already taken and are contemplating tonight, I believe the item will be a certainty and not in favor of the city. So I ask you, if I hear integrity and your courage, reject the unethical political pressure being brought to bear on you and reject this improper scheme.
Next up is Peter Higginson.
Tom, as I knew that... After? Can the people in the back here find?
If you're close to the mic.
If you're close to the mic. I'm Peter Higginson. I'm an attorney. I've had forty-seven years of experience in and around municipal law, the open meetings I agree with everything that everybody has said, including Mr. Burnett, and even my former next-door neighbor, Pat Alba, who listed all the occupations of mayors but left out the lawyer.[1460.62][1460.62](LAUGHTER) I'm sure, I'm sure it was a homicide. Former next-door neighbor on William Street a long time ago. And I want to say to Mr. Burnett, somebody up at this table has put your qualifications, your education, and your experience on the table for fair comment and analysis. Somebody's presenting you as qualified for the office of either acting city manager or city manager. Some councillors are attempting to overturn the November 2023 referendum in which the majority of the voters approved the doctrine of city management from a government, separating the political process of making policy at the common council from the executive function of executing that policy in the management of the city government. There's nothing wrong with politics at the common council. The city is where it is, in great part because too much politics in the execution of policy. They approved, those voters approved, a purpose statement for that referendum, which reads, quote, "A full-time city manager has the education and experience to administer the City of Oneida operations and expertise," they even stoned it there, "in managing departments and preparing budgets. Professional manager who understands how to motivate, evaluate, staff, and lead the City of Oneida, or responses to citizens and veterans, enable the City to hire and retain qualified individuals." That was passed. That is the intent. That is the spirit. That is the purpose of that referendum. Some councillors have proposed a series of resolutions affecting Leon Wells, but that Sullivan clearly intended to replace Robert Burnett in position as city manager, making Mr. Burnett's qualifications an issue. Does he have the education, experience, and expertise in managing departments and budgeting to professionally manage city government? Robert Burnett has been a City of Oneida director of codes since October 5, 2021, just less than two and a half years. He's managed three, he manages three employees, which is 1.75% of all city employees. He manages a salary budget of $238,823, less than 1% of the total city budget. His prior position as a co-enforcement officer had no management or executive responsibilities. He's not covered into the job description. He worked in the private sector before going to work for the city in 2014. He was a safety officer for a construction company. He was a commercial property manager, project manager, building houses.
You're right. I do three minutes. Can you just wrap it up? Mr. Bennett, sorry. Thank you.
Mr. Sullivan has a lot of experience, master's degree, bachelor's degree, a PhD. Ms. Wells has seven and a half years as comptroller. Comptroller knows more about what goes on in the city than anybody else. But sometimes it's good news, but when you're the mayor, eh, neither. Councillors who want Mr. Burnett to be acting city manager and likely city manager appear to have concluded that he has better credentials, that he has the education and the expertise with his two and a half years of experience as a manager. They owe the people of the City of Oneida an answer as to why you think his credentials qualify him to be the executive, I'm sorry, the city manager. You can all sit there like bunks on a log. You don't have to answer, but just remember, who refuses to answer often carries a bad influence. Your Honor.
And I yield my time to Mayor Higginson.[1720.02][1720.02](APPLAUSE)
Did we get a little quick lesson in civics? But we don't teach civics in school anymore. City council is a legislative body of the city. It makes policy. It makes policy when it meets in compliance with city charter, the open meetings law. It does not have authority to make policies by text, by email, by a series of phone conversations. It's supposed to meet in the open, public notice, have a forum, have an agenda, have resolutions, have votes, have crowded votes, have minutes. And when a common council doesn't do that, the things that they decide to line closed doors can be addressed in an Article 78 proceeding that's been previously managed. A lot of this stuff relating to the city manager has been done by councillors, not in public, not really like a day act. You've broken the trust of the city people who put you in those You've broken the trust of the same people who put you in those offices. You violated your oath. Because in your oath, by your oath, you're obligated to follow the laws, the state law, and what is in our charter. So the idea that you make a series of phone calls or something, that letter, the letter's a matter of public record. That letter came into being by a process that is not in compliance with the open meetings law or the city charter. And each of you who signed that owes, I think, an allegation to these people to explain how you did that and how you thought it was, how you thought it was legal. I've thought a lot about this situation as a former mayor, as an attorney, as a lifelong resident, as a governance nerd who has lived under the open meetings law when I was the president of the board of managers of the hospital and my municipal law. I'm not sure which of the words that end in NCE, ignorance of the open meetings law or arrogance. My councilperson has been on council for, I think this is his third term. Mr. Larrice is in his second term. A third war councillor has been distinctly familiar with the open meetings law because she was a faculty city clerk for two years. And the idea that you guys just did this, total disregard. I don't think it's ignorance. I'm afraid it's arrogance. Thank you.
Mr. Hegel, I'd like to respond to you, please.
Pardon?
I'd like to respond.
Sure. If I can come to the microphone.
Rick, I'm Richard Drop. I was next. I'll pass my time down.
Those are just.
No, let him finish.
No, no.
I'm going to respond to you.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Why do you speak? Speak. Explain yourself.
I would like to say something here and quote, "For the last 22 months and three days, I have had the honor of serving as mayor of the city of Oneida. During that time, I attempted to solve problems, some of which had lingered for many years. I did so because these problems needed attention. Knowing full well that dealing with problems can be harmful to one's political prospects. However, I did what I thought was right and necessary, saying, 'Damn the politics full speed ahead.'"
Mr. Hegel, do you recall who said this?
Google fool is a great thing. Yes, I love that.
Great, great. Memory still intact.
How many are you?
This was in your response to Leo Manetti as incumbent Republican mayor, 62 to 38% margin.
Mr. Zer, what does this have to do with?
Someone here to do with this?
Have some respect. Have some respect for the mayor.
You failed to rectify the problems that 15 years later still exist. Now, when we are trying to accomplish the same thing that you couldn't, you stand before us ridiculing us for embarrassing the city and threatening us with self-generated lawsuits, which counterintuitively would cost the taxpayers money.
The way you did it.
I am very chagrined by the fact that you would rather oppose us than to support our efforts to solve these issues. As a past mayor, I really expected more out of you than this.
And you too.
And you too.
You are 100% able to respond.
Mr. Sue, do you remember when you came to my house last fall seeking my vote for reelection as a member of the common council? Do you remember that?
Yes. I'm not going to get back and forth quickly.
Too late. You opened that door.
You came, you took our house, you came to my house, beautiful day, and then you sat at the table on my front porch, and you started to talk about why you wanted to be re-elected. And I asked you, what's the, I asked you the same question that I asked everybody who seeks my vote for city office, or when I was on Republican City Committee, when everybody came for the city committee to ask for the adoption of the committee. There's a few people that would remember being asked that by the committee meetings. I said, "What is the job description for the position you're seeking?" And your answer was, "Pretty much, I'm going to summarize in my words, huh? You didn't even know what the job description was." And I said, "The job description is in the city charter. Have you read the city charter?" And your response was, "No." The job description for the common council is in the charter. It's very simple. They make policy, ask, hate, bother, not individually, they don't, they have no authority. No individual councillor has any authority to go to any department, have any city employee, and tell him or her, "This is what I want you to do. This is the vision I want you to follow." The council as a whole has the heart, has the ability to give direction. They do that through resolutions and proper meetings. So, you know, yeah, I worked real hard as mayor. I don't know if you were in the city back then or not. We solved some problems back then. We didn't have time to solve everything. We were confronted by a major national, international recession, the Great Recession of 2008, 2009, and there was this little thing called Land and the Trust, which was very, very interesting and challenging to deal with. And not every problem got solved. Some problems got solved when I was mayor, and I'm very proud of that. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Put your drop next.
Hello, I'm Richard Drop. I'm a 10-year resident of Onida. I was a transplant. I've integrated myself into this community. I have voted since I've been here. I voted Mr. Rossi and I voted for the city to have manager position. We have been a victim of fraud and investment in our past and obviously some corruption. And the city manager position is supposed to prevent that for us. If body language could speak, I see five members up here that look a little uncomfortable today, and I hope that's because you know you did something wrong. And I'm holding the agenda in my hand. This is our agenda, not your agenda. So please respond.
Sorry, I'm going to fumble this name. Janet, thank you, lady. Rob, thank you, lady. No? Okay. Vincent Bailey.
So the good news is a lot of people here, they all want positive change for the city. So that hasn't been noticed yet, so that's a good thing. My name is Vincent Bailey. I own several properties within the city of Oneida, which include, some of which include the city center building, which is located across from the police station, houses, the bland neighborhood boutique in aesthetics, the 105 Herschel, Chinese restaurant. Completely redid a single family house, 123 Golden Lane, and also Paltry Track, Verde Ridge, 412 Genesee Street, have an apartment complex, carriage house, located up on Main and Main Street. These projects, among others, translate into millions of dollars of investment. While I can't take sole credit for any of these projects, while I can't take sole credit for any of these projects, I think it is evident that all the projects that I have done have benefited the city. So I put my money where my mouth is. Last year, Mr. Burnett ran for supervisor of the town of Feder. Excuse me. Last year, Mr. Burnett ran for supervisor of the town of Smithville, where he only received 25 votes. If it is evident that his own neighbors would not support him to vote for him as their supervisor, I believe it is evident that, and by the crowd here, that they would not wish him to be the city manager. That's all I have to say.
Hi, I'm Linda Q. I live in Ward 1 on Wilbur Street. I actually ran for common council in 2022, and my, boy, consider one of my political mentors, Peter Hegel, I actually have the charter, and I said I'm highlighting it when I ran, so I have that in my house. I'm concerned that the common council even considered sweeping aside the educational requirement for the purposes of expediency or convenience. There's a very good reason that education is required to perform specific duties in our society. Certainly, understanding how to run a municipality falls into this category. Watching government run doesn't qualify someone to run themselves. For cities comparable in size to Onida, having a minimum bachelor's degree seems like a very reasonable ask. As it stands, we actually have a very qualified candidate who would be capable of stepping into the city manager role. City comptroller Leanne Wells has a college degree in business and accounting. She has nearly 10 years of experience in the city comptroller's office and her pivotal role in planning a path forward for Onida. She's clearly a qualified candidate. She checks all the boxes. However, it seems that already the process of selecting a city manager has become so highly politicized that to consider throwing one's hat into the ring means that the stability of your career is at the mercy of political wins and allegiances. When Mr. Selby initially appointed Ms. Wells as acting city manager, it was intended to be temporary. The council says that having her on both roles is a conflict of interest, but it's not a conflict of interest for Mr. Burnett. I was told Zogby codes to be city manager, but that's not really reflecting a short-term plan. Mr. Selby's time with Onida was always intended to be limited. However, now the council wants to terminate him. Termination is a very strong word. What are metrics to evaluate him or anyone else in this position? It seems clear that the council's intention was to take this opportunity to onboard a lesser qualified candidate of the council's choosing and to do it as quickly as possible. In November, voters in good faith supported this proposed change based on the understanding that the city manager would have a college degree in a related field and would have the experience needed to manage the city. Only two months after leaving into big changes, they want to change course to accommodate a specific person. As Mr. Zogby said in the last meeting, you can't cherry pick for today's personalities. Experience, although important, cannot replace education. And in a non-speech note, I just want to say that, Rick, I know we haven't always seen eye to eye, but I have a lot of respect that you chose to veto this, and I really appreciate it. So thank you.
Say again? Next up is Jim Goldberg.
Good evening, common council. I have mayor and fellow citizens. Jim Goldberg, 544 Broadway, full disclosure, I have a little bit more in common with a lot of you up there, two-term councilman to the third ward. So I'm bringing a different perspective to this. I can say that I agree with all of the comments and opinions about hubris and lack of control and that sort of thing. But what I want to say, and I will ask the mayor and I will ask the comptroller, is the city of Onida a member of the New York State Town Conference of Mayors? Night. Okay. Because it was my pleasure to spend the better part of the day when I first took office with a couple of my fellow councilpeople, went out to become educated in what it was to be a city elected official. I guess my question, and this can be rhetorical, how many of you have gone to an ICA training conference? Okay, so I would strongly suggest that you make that time investment because this would forestall some of the embarrassing situations that you find yourself in. And having sat, you're sat, there's a lot of discomfort, okay? Not to agree to your benefit, but there's, I've been there, done that, got the ball cap and the t-shirt, okay? So I would strongly urge that happen. However, my concern is how did this document get done? How did it wind up in a form that was looked to be an actual item of legal voting? I guess the question I would have is, did the clerk see this before it became part of the agenda? If not, why not? And where is the city attorney in all of this? It seems as though that's what we hired, or you hired, or renewed the city attorney for. So I would strongly suggest that there be some serious soul searching and hopefully you'll do the right thing and get smart about what you're going to be doing. Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you very much for the opportunity. My name is Rick Consola. I've lived in Onida almost all of my 75 years. I have six siblings, and I graduated from Onida High School. My dad was president of the school board when this building was conceived and built. I'm here tonight to primarily address my comments to the five members of the council who set this activity in motion. My comment is, have you no sense of decency? At long last, have you left no sense of decency? Last fall, at a public meeting at OPL, all of you as candidates professed your commitment to transparency in your role in the government. Some of you even mocked some of your opponents who spoke about providing an open government. In your role as a public servant, you are responsible to know your duties under the open meeting law. You failed miserably, and at the very least, before you take any further action, you should be compelled to complete training from the committee from open government on the open meetings law and demonstrate you have some proficiency in this. Your course of action, as you proceeded, has set in motion the resignation of an eminently qualified person who had taken steps and begun to put the structure, the format, for this new position that we're all very excited about. And instead, your action has resulted in promoting somebody And instead, your action has resulted in promoting somebody to replace that person whose responsibility to date is supervising three people in a budget of less than $250,000. I don't know if it's legal, I'm not an attorney, but it's certainly not moral for you to try to change the requirements of what the voters voted for just last November, especially when you're doing it based on two months of experience and you've yet to provide any explanation for your actions whatsoever. It's hard to see this as anything other than a bait and switch. There've been multiple attempts to have a city manager in the past. Thank God, I think the voters finally saw the whiz coming. But there's no rationale for what your folks have done. It stinks of cronyism, and it's a complete abdication of a responsibility in oath. It will be a waste, fraud, and abuse.
Hello, I'm Ariel Hero. Ward five, build itself. I had nothing prepared about qualifications and education, but now I'm just angry and appalled by some of the council members' behaviors and actions over the past month and especially tonight. The people that sign that letter should all be ashamed and resign immediately.
And I just want to commend all of you for taking all of the harassment and self-loathing. I expect that you're all making a lot of money up here, okay? And every day that you come to work or meet or whatever, you gotta answer several complaints. There's birds lying around my house, there's garbage over here. Something's happening over here, okay? You're not making any money. You're doing this because your heart is in it, okay? And I want to commend you all for that. I want to talk about the last couple of years. There was a large sum of money that was taken from the city of Oneida. And I think some of you were on the council and some were out here in the audience. And I don't think there was any mention of that. So I want to commend you guys for doing an excellent job because for some reason you're seeing that there's an issue here and you're addressing it, you're on top of it. There is a problem. You're on top of it, you're addressing it. And I want to commend you. So we've been here for a little while and nothing has been done that I can see. Are we saving any money? Are we doing anything for the city that we haven't done? Previous administrations, you had some mayor that had no experience. You had some, I remember a mayor that said he had no business experience, but he was still learning, all right? What's the experience up here now? What have we done in the last few months? Can you tell me anything we've done in the last few months to save some money and to lower the taxes for the people or keeping it at a significant rate where it's not out of sight? I believe we were at a 9% tax rate. You guys got it down to 2% to 3%? Perfect. Commend you guys today. I don't know what other, something else I could say, but thank you very much for all addressing this issue and being on topic. Thank you.
Do you want to speak in public hearing or public comment at the end?
At the end.
At the end?
Me?
Yes, you.
I'll speak now.
Okay, come on.
Good evening, I'm Ralph Kohler. I have lived 25 years in Ward One. I have 37 years of government service and government-related graduate education. So I understand government service can be hard. But I think that Mr. Hedlund, although he listed arrogance and ignorance as two possible causes here, I see another word that I think fits, and that is corruption. I think you've acted not in accordance with your obligations as civil servants. Like many residents and voters and the audience, I've been watching the city manager issue for a year. I saw the committee to generate qualification recommendations to assure somebody was qualified. I saw the common council put those qualifications to a vote and I saw that vote approved by a 60 to 40% split. I was to admit dismayed last month when five members of the council acted illegally to designate an alternate acting city manager for no reason given when your job is to tell us why you do things, to build common access to things. And make the mistake, that action was illegal. I was shocked when I read that you were proposing to change the qualifications to be so nebulous and arbitrary that you could pick almost anybody over 35 to fill that job position. And when Mayor Rossi asked you collectively at the last meeting why this change is being made, I was incredulous when most of you were initially silent. And Mr. Laurenti spoke for 30 seconds while being completely unresponsive, questioned what the mayor asked, especially after several people in the audience explained that these qualifications were chosen after extensive work. You then passed the resolution without a debate, no explanations why you were overriding the will of the voters, and that expression was less than four months ago. However, I was really flabbergasted last week that you vetoed the mayor's, that you voted to override the mayor's veto. Thank you, Mayor Rossi. You've placed those resolutions today to both override the veto and to remove Mr. Shelby. Mr. Shelby, thank you for your service. I understand you have a PhD and 10 years' experience as the manager of one of America's largest cities. That's a step further even than the illegal action from February because there, you weren't removing Mr. Shelby, you were just putting a new backup manager. So you're attempting to replace him with someone who currently supervises three people and is manifestly unqualified to be the city manager in the position the voters proved, again, less than four months ago. A vote for city manager resolutions tonight would be corrupt acts.
We only have three minutes to speak.
Because all of the evidence, all of it, points to a year-long conspiracy that could be the voters to choose a city manager which is not well-qualified for the position, but rather appears to be your unqualified crony. So these resolutions are a test for the county council members tonight. It failed the test collectively for the last couple of months. I hope you're better tonight, and I'm sure that everybody here hopes you're better tonight. Thank you.
Can I get a motion to close the vote here? Oh, Mr. Laurenti wants to speak.
Anybody ready? I'd like to provide a timeline, you know, of the facts as of today and what we've seen over the past couple of months. So regarding the interim city manager, the city manager position was posted in late 2023. When we first met with Mr. Selby last year, we had asked him what his plan was. He stated he did not really want to work 40 hours a week, which gave us a little bit of concern, but he did have city manager experience. And he was required, we had a quick turnaround, we were required to have somebody January 1st. Due to the timing and the job fill requirement, in 12/29/23, the council appointed Mr. Selby on a temporary interim basis. Knowing he's a relative of a Republican committee members, we appointed him with the plan to find a long-term manager as quickly as possible in an effort to avoid any accusations of nepotism. I didn't have that weekend's way downstairs. And we did receive, you know, there's a couple of people in the audience that were accusing us of nepotism right from the beginning, before we even appointed a manager. By December, out of 13 applicants, one individual was interviewed, one canceled their interview, and one never called back. The one we interviewed was a fully qualified candidate with a majority consensus to be a top contender, with the mayor's disagreement. So we compromised. The candidate said he did not feel welcomed in the interview and since we can only interview together twice a month in executive session, candidate took a job elsewhere. I met with Mr. Selby the second week of January for a one-on-one. To my surprise, he stated he wanted to stay two to three years. We had to push for a formal interview with Mr. Selby on February 20th. Again, we can only meet as a group twice a month. With only seven weeks on the job, the mayor suggested we discuss entering into a contract with Mr. Selby. We said no, we want to interview. We had received accusations of nepotism and we did not want this to become an issue down the road. Up until now, we have received almost daily complaints from residents regarding numerous issues and have our own concerns with performance that have cost the taxpayers money. Regarding the acting city manager, two weeks into the year, Mr. Selby wrote us a letter naming the comptroller as acting manager. It is a conflict of interest to have the person managing the finances be the same person managing the operations and staff. Any effective organization should have a clear separation of powers in checks and balances, which is a fundamental accounting concept. The council is considering naming the director, quote, as acting manager because he has knowledge of the city to keep things moving along, managerial experience, and has shown ability to build a department with a system of checks and balances from the ground up. This nomination would create no conflict with finances or reduction in priority services the city provides like police, fire, water, sewer, DPW. As a reminder, the acting manager must work in conjunction with the council and act as a placeholder until the city manager position is filled. The council would like to open up the job posting, open it back up as it never should have been closed. We are not lowering the qualifications or dumbing them down. We are requiring a business degree or a public administration degree plus five years' management experience or at least double the management experience. As currently written, unfortunately, Mr. Selby's degrees, the field of study, do not fit within the parameters of these qualifications and he has the experience. Expanding these requirements will support the renewed job posting in an effort to get more applicants. For several years, I've worked in human resources and I can tell you this is not an atypical process. I also have posting examples from both Madison and Anadaga County to prove this. So I'm just going to read a quick couple. Executive Director, Anadaga County, bachelor's degree and eight years' experience or part-time equivalent in public administration, human services, or 12 years' experience on a professional level, or an equivalent combination of both. Director of Operations, bachelor's degree and two years' professional level experience providing management, or six years' professional level experience.
Bob has done.
Madison County, Business Manager, Bachelor's Degree in Accounting, Business Administration, closely related field, or Associate's Degree in Accounting, Business Administration, or graduation, possession of equivalent CDP amount and four years of business experience. So, you know, just as a reminder to everybody, you know, you guys are calling us corrupt and, you know, we should examine all this.
You should. Do you have a secret meeting?
Yes, there was no secret meeting. One person gives the letter to the next person.
Just explain, that's not part of the open meetings law, right?
Why did you leave out one councillor?
As a reminder to everyone, from 2005 to 2020, there was approximately $550,000 stolen from the taxpayers because of the real checks and balances increase. There's also currently an investigation into poor accounting practices and unaccounted for funds dating back to 2020 with direct funding. We need tighter policies and more checks and balances. As a reminder, the council fought the law to fund the tax increase from a proposed 9.5% to 2.4%. One council member voted against this. I say this to prove that we always will work in the best interest of the taxpayers in mind. Status quo is uncomfortable with change. We're faced with opposing parties, current employees, past employees, relatives of employees, past politicians, current politicians, and current past union members, many who have competing opinions. We need to implement the best strategies for an improved community. So when we do disagree, we need you all to know that our decisions are done with the best interest of the community at heart. We strive not to let personal opinions or relationships skew our objectives. Remember, we all live here, you know, everybody lives here and we're all affected by the decisions we make. So the council would invite you to work with us.
Then keep Selby an interim.
Yes.
I'd like to speak on the timeline and me not liking the last candidate that took a job and before one of our council members could even interview them. So to place the blame on me is conical at this point. Oh, I'm not doing that.
All department heads and qualifications for our city of Omega?
Our rec department has, our rec department director has to have a bachelor's degree. Our comptroller has to have a bachelor's degree. Our planning department leader has to have a master's degree. But you want the person that's going to be their boss to not have a degree and make more money than that?
Can I get a motion to close the public meeting? All in favor? I'm going to pass the meeting on to our city clerk. Can I get approval of minutes for March 19, 2024? All in favor? Any no's and any extension? Motion's passed. Can I get approval of Ward number seven? All in favor? Any no's and any extension? Motion's passed.
Motion's passed. Now I will turn it over to our city clerk's team.
Item number one, veto of Resolution 24-64. Receive and place on, receive and present Mayor Rick Rossi's veto of Resolution 24-64 of March 19, 2024, introducing a local law amending section 12.1 of the Oneida City Charter to change the qualifications of the city manager and revoking Resolution 24-64 and further rescinding the introduction of a local law of 2024 titled A Local Law Amending Section 12.1 of the Oneida City Charter to change the qualifications of the city manager position. It wasn't noted at the time because this was given late. This will be a roll call vote.
We can't hear.
Mayor Rossi?
Yes.
Counselor Zerba?
No.
Counselor Ready?
No.
Counselor Hitchens?
No.
Counselor Winchell?
No.
Counselor Pagano?
Yes.
Counselor Semche?
Yes.
You work for us.
Shame on him.
We're remembering the voting rights.
Item number two, cellular telephone policy. Receive and place on file the revised City of Oneida Cellular Telephone Policy and approve the personal phone use allowance of $40 per month for the balance of 2024.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any no's, any abstentions? Motion's passed.
Item number three, standard workday. Adopt the resolution establishing a standard workday for elected officials for the purpose of determining day's work to be reported to New York State and local employees' retirement system based on the record of activities maintained and submitted by the city clerk. Counselor Zerba would have to abstain from this.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any no's and any abstentions? Motion's passed.
Item number four, liquor license. Receive and place on file a standardized notice form for providing thirty-day advance notice to a local municipality or community board for a new application for non-tennis alcohol, water license for Sejo de Mayo, two Mexican restaurant LLC, 127 Genesis 3, Oneida.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any no's and any abstentions? Motion's passed.
Item number five, desired leave of residence. Authorize the reimbursement at the cost of Medicare Part B coverage for all eligible retired city employees and any eligible dependents who retired prior to July 1, 2015, regardless of union affiliation or non-affiliation, and regardless of whether said retiree is enrolled in the city's Medicare Advantage and Prescription Program for year 2024.
Any discussion on that?
Any discussion?
What's this now against, again, please, the city wants to pick up the Part B?
This is, we don't go back and forth in our meetings. But we more than often talk in public comment after.
What exactly?
Right after the meeting. Right after the meeting. All in favor? Any no's, any abstentions? Motion's passed.
Item number six, scheduled public hearing. Receive and place on file the report of unsafe structures from the city's fire marshal and schedule a public hearing pursuant to Oneida City Code Chapter 34, Article 3, unsafe buildings and collapsed structures on property located at 238 Allen Park Place for Tuesday, May 7, 2024, in the common council chambers 109 North Main Street.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any no's, any abstentions? Motion is passed.
Item number seven, advertise for bids. Authorize the purchasing agent to advertise for bids for Maple Drive sanitary sewer repair.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any no's, any abstentions? Motion is passed.
Item number eight, Capital Project 24-1 Annual Street Servicing. Authorize the city engineer to proceed with Capital Project 24-1. Authorize the use of unit prices established for 2024 by Madison County. Authorize the purchasing agent to advertise for bids for any portions of the project not covered under the county's unit pricing. Authorize the city engineer to expend funds up to the program amount dispersed by New York State DOT, and authorize the city manager to sign any and all documents related to Capital Project 24-1.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any no's, any abstentions? Motion is passed.
Item number eight, budget transfers. Approve the budget transfers and amendments outlined by the comptroller.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any no's, any abstentions? Motion is passed.
Item number 10, salary change. Authorize to change the grade of pay from $32 an hour to $33.05 an hour retroactive to the start date of the creation of the position for Assistant Maintenance Supervisor for the Water Department.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any no's, any abstentions? Motion is passed.
Item number 11, adopt local law. Adopt a lo- Item number 11 will be stricken. Item number 12, revoke city manager's designation of acting city manager and any other prior designations of acting city manager and designate a new acting city manager. Latter part was.
Yes, Resolution 12 has been changed to reflect the submission of the city manager Selby's resignation on the agenda and the impending termination of himself. So that will be stricken from the agenda, and we will be voting just on the, the acting city manager. Motion? Anybody? Can't hear. Any discussion? So this is- This, so, I'm sorry, I could kind of tell you exactly what you're voting for because of this being taken out. They're revoking the city manager designation of comptroller Lynn Wells as acting city manager, and they're approving the designation of the director of code enforcement, Bob Burnett, takes the position of acting city manager effective immediately.
We can't do that if you veto the local law. If you veto the local law, you can't do that.
I will let the city attorney speak on that.
So just, just for clarification for everybody, the, the local law was, was a modification with respect to the qualifications of the city manager position, but the council still has appointment authority with respect to the acting city manager position under these circumstances. So this resolution and this action by the common council is not implicated by the local law being removed from the agenda.
Wait, is that qualification? Is that qualification? Are you being emphasized?
The, the acting city manager position, the only qualifications as reflected in, in the local law and in the charter are that they be a city official or city employee. The city manager position has the higher level of qualifications.
Point of information, your honor. The amendment of the charter that was approved says that the acting city manager, in the, I'm sorry, in the event of, in the event of removal of the city manager- The city council may revoke the designation of the city manager with respect to a acting city manager, and if they, if they revoke that designation, they may appoint another qualified individual. The only discussion prior to that provision, use of the word qualified, is to establish the qualifications of the city manager. Basic English, Mrs. Alba? What are the rules about antecedents? The prior use of a term or its derivative is the antecedent. So the qualif-, I believe the qualifications of the city manager apply to the acting city manager.
I'm, I'm not going to, at this point, get into a discussion about the-
Watch the table.
Tableau, tableau.
Have you read the amendment?
Yes, thank you. Would the council like to step into executive session for a brief moment?
No, no.
Yes, yes.
No proper reason has been given.
This person, there's no, there's nothing on the city charter that says anything about interim city manager. So how is Mr. Selby not afforded the same rights as the city manager and have to, they shall put on the resolution why the reasons they need to, they're removing, and that has not been done. There's not one mention of an interim city manager in that, in that package here.
Again, just, just, just for clarification, the language as it reflects, as it, with respect to the acting city manager is that they be a city officer or employee. Those are the only qualifications listed with respect to the acting city manager. So the city council may revoke such designation and appoint another qualified individual to serve until the city man- Well, yes, but the qualifications as listed above indicate that the qualifications are solely city officer or employee. Those are the qualifications as reflected in the plain line.
And what do we vote on in November?
So again, the qualifications for the acting city manager are not the same and are not designated as the same as the city manager.
What, what is the citation to the authority you're quoting?
This is in section 12.3, acting city manager.
Chart. Cable it.
Maybe one of the council people can explain it.
Give it to the opposition, doesn't it make sense to table it?
These people will do what they want, apparently. They didn't listen to any of your public comments. Do you now set forth the reason? As, in regards to the city charter? Mr. Zerba has put forward a table. You're right, and it's now been tabling, so we have to vote on tabling. So?
Go ahead.
You said you were preparing for the city.
Okay.
We put you in office, you failed to take it out.
One council member asked for the table.
Acting city manager.
All in favor of tabling this? Aye.
Aye.
No.
Any no's?
No.
All right.
Acting city manager.
I'd like to hear everybody say no.
Roll call.
Roll call. Roll call.
All right, let's go. They just voted. Okay, here what you guys are voting, so this is what I'm trying to-
Okay, can I, do you mind if I take the roll call? I'm sorry.
On a table.
Roll call.
So, two motions to table. Did anybody second that?
Can't hear you either.
Did anybody suck in the table?
Suck in the table. Suck in the-
You want a constituent's watch.
Suck in the table.
That's where it ends, then, apparently.
You're going tables that you don't have a bone.
Vote on, now we're going to vote on the item number 12. So Sandy likes to do as a roll call, she just can't hear.
I'm sorry, I can't.
So.
All right, so Mayor Rossi.
I was at NOS anymore.
No.
Counselors Zerba?
Yes.
Counselor Ready?
Yes.
Counselor Hitchens?
Yes.
Counselor Winchell?
Yes.
Counselor Pagano? Counselor Semche?
No.
Motion is passed.
Shame on him, all of you.
Point, point of information, point of information, that's an amendment of the charter?
Is that an amendment of the charter, sir?
No, it's not. Just a resolution, Eric.
A resolution. Thank you.
Thanks for taking the city into account, guys.
All right, any new business from council? Mr. Selby traded his addition in, so it's, that's all I can do. Public comment's up next, so if anybody signed up for public comment. The first up is Janet, Dan or Janet Jones?
My husband is an election official, he's down at the Cali tonight, so he prepared some statements he'd like me to read. My name's Janet Jones, and I live on East Walnut Street. I was born in Oneida, bought a home, raised a family, and work here. I regret not being able to give these remarks in person. Hopefully I saw some of you today when you voted. I find it disheartening that common council schedules public remarks on an important issue on a night that conflicts with an election, but that seems to be the theme of the evening. Decisions made by our common council without proper disclosure, process, or due diligence. As I said in my email to my board councilman, Mr. Winchell, earlier today, allow me to add my voice to the rest of those beseeching you to uphold the majority, though, of Oneida residents last November regarding the city manager position. It appears that there was a rush to judgment to fill the position before January 1st, and I'm afraid we are headed to the same results again. There was a process, and I believe we should follow the process and not make it up as we go. One final brief point. In reviewing the job responsibilities for the city manager position, I was struck by how similar, similar they are to another I recently interviewed. Councilwoman Steve Loretta is a friend, former coworker, and someone I greatly respect. In his position as the Director of Administrative Services for the Madison County Sheriff's Department, Ms. Loretta is responsible for an operating budget of $17 million, writing and managing $1 million in grants, developing and implementing new programs, overseeing payroll, contracts, and all finance-related area. He manages a social media account, websites, community relations, and educational outreach programs. Mr. Loretta has a bachelor's degree from Illinois College and a master's degree from Syracuse University. He is obviously qualified for his position. Given the current circumstances and the limited reasons presented for tonight's resolutions, can we assume Mr. Loretta would consider Bob Burnett qualified to perform the same duties but with a much larger budget, more departments reporting to him, and considerably more employees under his direction? I think we know the answer, and that is why it makes little sense to even consider lowering the requirements for the city manager position, in my humble opinion. Thank you for your time, Dan Jones.
Next up is Dee Shaper.
I was going to speak just on the, um, day 7th, um, meeting about 230 Allen Park Place, but I want to start out by saying that I am incredibly disappointed in all of you. I am incredibly disappointed in all of you. I hired you. You work for us, and you picked us, and all of us. This has reached across party lines, and you've let us all down. My name is Dee Shaper. I live at 240 Allen Park Place. For almost nine months, we've been dealing with a burnt-out house on 238 Allen Park Place. It's been broken into twice since it burned through an open window that nobody bothered to fix. It was not boarded up until March 26th, 2024. This house sold on 12/15/23 for $5,000 Utica Property LLC, 2408 Genesee Street, Utica, New York, 13512. Yet another absentee property owner in our city of Omerta. We've dealt with wood, slates, flashing, and tar paper falling into our yard. We've dealt with large pieces of metal flashing and a tarp flapping up and down on our roof during windy days and nights. Perhaps one of you might let loose leave in my bedroom tonight, 10 feet away from it while the wind blows. A couple of weeks ago, there were squirrels looking out the lower windows end, and if it weren't so frustrating, it would have been comical. The health issues with this house are a concern as well. With the rain from the winter going into a roofless house, it has become a breeding ground for mosquitoes. And when the weather is warm, we are swarmed outside. We can't even sit on our porch. There are bats roosting in what is left of the rafters. A Brady's concern. All of the roof that the new owner, and I use that term incredibly loosely, took off as my tossment to the backyard, and I hate to think of what is living in there. I have pictures and video. If all of you would like to see it, but obviously we don't care about constituents. I am here to tell you that I am fed up with this ice floor and cleaning up after it. In October, I mentioned to the realtor that stood in front of that house that we had been mowing the lawn. We had been mowing that lawn, not the city. And her words to us were, "Good, it'll make your property look not so scabby if you want to sell it," which is not really funny, because we're looking to sell. We're looking to move on out of Omerta with people like you. There is not a measurable, and I mean measurable, difference in this building by the end of April. The end of April will be nine full months that we have lived with this. Perhaps the local Syracuse and Utica media stations would like to come out and hear our story about what our city council is all about.
Yep. Next up is Sue Paul.
I want to make sure that everybody understands what just happened here. On item number 12, what you did was you terminated Doug Selby, you terminated Leanne from being the city manager's designation, and you appointed Bob Burnett as the ex-city manager. Is that correct? Yes.
But Doug did resign before.
Right, Doug, Doug did resign. I understand that. And the first four councilors voted for them, right? And the last two voted against it, right?
Yep.
How can you sit up there and live with yourselves after listening to everybody here? You didn't even have the decency to second Tom Thibodeau to that resolution and talk about it, and at least make everybody here think you cared about what we said. You had your minds- You had your minds made up before you even came to the table.
Absolutely.
Why did you bother to have a public hearing and listen to us? It doesn't matter what we said, because obviously, none of you cared. None of you cared. I, I'm just disgusted with this city and the city council. And in closing, I'd like to say something to Ward One.
Read it.
I cannot believe the way that you talked to our mayor, the way you- The way you pointed your finger at him and raised your voice. You were, you were voted in by your few people that you were. Our mayor was voted by everybody in this city. How dare you?
Angel Vargas Jr., is next.
My name is Angel Vargas Jr. I own two businesses in the city, and I agree with everything everybody said. I would like to second what I believe Mr. Shaw said. Mr. Selby, Dr. Selby, I apologize. You had to sit here and go through this. This city does have good people who live here. Unfortunately, it's not represented by good people. They eluded what the people really want to do. Your credentials speak for themselves. What's happened here is an embarrassment for the whole city, and I hope you four sleep well. I know it's been said, Ward One, Mr. Mr. Zerba, that you constructed this, you were the leader, but unfortunately, truth be told, you were the one that constructed the letter. Everybody said you're the leader. You don't quite frankly possess leadership skills. And honestly, I like Bob Burnett. I hope he's still here to hear this. You run a department of two people, three people at best. Nobody in the city likes you. I like you, Bob, but everybody who works with you doesn't. I'm gonna be honest with you, okay? Going forward, I hope the people vote you right out of office. You shouldn't be sitting here with sinners. Remember, when you leave tonight, this is small-town America. Karma's real. You're gonna look these people in the face every time you go somewhere, and I hope to God they give it to you, because you're not listening to any of them. Thank you to Bill Pagan. I, I, I thank you for coming here. I understand you have some medical issues. Thank you for rescinding your vote and voting appropriately.
Bill Pagan, he's sick.
Good job.
Good job.
As a governance nerd who has read the charter more than once, have to respond to Mr. Harry Peters. As a governance nerd, I have to respond, as a governance nerd who's read the charter numerous times, I have to respond to Mr. Loretty's raising of the possibility of a conflict of interest as a reason to remove Leanne Wells as the acting city manager. I wish he'd read the charter, or, or understood the charter, because the charter provides that there's an audit committee, or voucher audit committee, of the common council who review each and every audit, has to approve it, report it to the council as a whole, and the council as a whole has to approve every single check that comes out of the city. Now, the city checks are often signed by, under the charter, the chief executive officer and the, and the comptroller. The city, if there really was a conflict of interest, the resolution would have been for the mayor to appoint a special committee to reconcile the checkbooks, because right now, I don't, that's not done by the council, to make sure that what is actually paid out is what was approved by the common council audit or voucher committee, as well as approved by the council as a whole. If there was a conflict of interest, there was a perfectly appropriate legitimate workaround into, into, into tang Ms. Wells with a possible conflict of interest, I think was ignorant, and certainly was cruel. Thank you.
It's not appropriate to call people ignorant. It's not appropriate to call people ignorant. I haven't called, I haven't done any name-calling. I haven't, I've let you guys speak. I haven't made any snide remarks. I haven't laughed. You know, it's-
You did wrong.
Final accounting concept, there has to be checks and balances. And for you to say that there were checks and balances, you know, what, what about the $550,000?
Oh, my God.
You guys forget that.
I'm not, I'm not aware of all the details. The details is not to make public-
I can tell you it wasn't good.
But wasn't one of the council members, Mr. Chamberlain?
But the City Chamberlain is an elected official.
Right.
In the city, that you cannot, you cannot blame, we can't blame the common council or the mayor for what the City Chamberlain did, what the City Chamberlain allegedly did under the auspices of her office, which is, as City Chamberlain, she is accountable to the people. The City Chamberlain does not have direction from the mayor or the council.
There's no direction. And, and this is nothing personal, you know, this is nothing personal.
So you retract? They're saying that when you said there would be a conflict of interest, did Ms. Wells say that position, that wasn't personal?
Because, no, it's not personal. Anybody in that position. I, I think if you're overseeing the fact, look at any company. You don't have a CFO being the same as a COO.
Then why did you guys undertake the position in the first place?
Take what position?
Why was she, why was she deemed as the acting city manager?
She was the most qualified.
We, we didn't do that. We were written a letter.
I had the education, it's true.
People are saying that you were never gonna let Leanne be city manager. That is what is circulating around. You guys were never gonna give Leanne a chance.
No, no, no. Oh, that's the, the- When, when, when the, when the, when the possibility of a conflict of interest was identified, did anybody think about having a special committee on a temporary basis, if Ms. Wells is comptroller, was also acting as, acting as a manager, to have a special committee to review the checks?
It's not just the checks.
Unfortunately, they, they did not ask any department head how Mr. Selby was doing. They just pointed him and put in their own people how they wanted to do it, and this is the end. They've, they've done what they want. Next up is Ricky Dogby.
Ricky Dogby, 114 East Sand Street, former council member for four years. Um, this is heartbreaking. Um, but there are a couple of issues that are unresolved, and we don't want to call names, so let's just ask a few questions. The, the money that was allegedly taken by the City Chamberlain, um, it's come up a number of times, especially Mr. Loretty. You brought it up. And so, two years ago, there was a vote that was brought up, and it was defeated to make that part, that City Chamberlain a non-elected official. That went down probably at least two years ago. You were a councilor then, you are a councilor now. Can you tell me when it was that you introduced new legislation about the City Chamberlain to no longer be elected and to be appointed and to have oversight? When was it that you introduced legislation? Because it's important to you as a councilman. When did you introduce that legislation? Why not? What were you busy with? You also said in your diatribe that it could only be twice a month. Is that in the charter? No, you can have a special meeting. You can have a special meeting every day, every other day. Why haven't you had one? Is it, are you too busy? Oh, you're too busy. Thank you. You're too busy, but yet, this is very important to you, so there's only one more question I have to ask. And Mr. Burnett, you were kind enough to share with us in your opening statement that you were asked if you would be interested in becoming city manager. Is that correct?
Yes.
You said you were interested, you were asked if you would be interested in becoming the city manager.
No, not at all. No, that's not enough.
But you didn't mention who it was that asked you. You can remember that, but you didn't mention who it was that asked you. And I think that's an important question for all of us, to figure out who, did you want them to respond to that? No, okay, that's big.
Especially by the last one, I'd like to thank Mr. Shelby for his service. I appreciate it. I'm, I think I speak on behalf of most people here when I say we're sorry you could not stay longer and that you were effectively pushed out by five people who, I think we all will be, acted illegally, and I think it's quite renowned, active corruptive. Thank you.
In the beginning, we skipped over our mayor's report, our supervisor's report, our city manager's report. The supervisors don't have anything, city manager. I'd just like to, myself, thank Dr. Selby and, um, and apologize on behalf of the city. There's a lot of departments, all the departments that have a very relationship with you. I believe we were moving the city forward. And I, I really hope that we can find somebody that is, has the same experience and qualifications as we move it forward there. So, I appreciate you. Thank you. Alright, taking the motion to adjourn in the meeting.
Arnold Baugh, shake.
All favor? Any no's, any objections? Thanks, thank you guys all for coming. Thanks, thank you guys all for coming.
You may call at your convenience. It turns out, you, although we're both on... We were in meetings together. I don't have your emails. I thought I did.
We were in meetings together, Laurie.
The STEM campereen, eight, nine years ago. And I have all my emails, but apparently, you weren't actually on those emails.